Good evening. I'm calling to order the special meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Monday, July 23rd, and we are meeting at the Ford ICE Administration Building. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Here.
Mrs. Lize.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Sudar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. At this time, will have any public participation relative to items on the agenda? If there's anyone from the public who wants to speak to us, they would come up to the podium. And seeing none, we will move on. Oh, we are making one correction to the agenda. Number five, the facilities update, will be taking place after number 10, which, so we will be taking all of our business actions first. But before we do that, Dr. Jones, would you please stand up? I have to tell you, because Debbie wasn't in the office, we don't have to see a lot here, so we have to wait. But we have a commendation for you.
Is it official?
It will be. Yes.
As soon as Debbie ratifies.
On behalf of the citizens of Euclid, it is a pleasure to present this commendation to Dr. Joffrey Jones for 10 years of exemplary service as superintendent of the Euclid City School District. Dr. Jones began his tenure on July 1st, 2002. During his tenure, Dr. Jones was instrumental in getting voters' approval of two operating levies, a permanent improvement levy, and a bond issue. The bond issue was the culmination of a facilities master plan process led by Dr. Jones. Four new elementary buildings opening in the 2012-13 school year will serve Euclid students well into the 21st century. As superintendent, Dr. Jones led efforts that saw the district's state rating go from academic watch to continuous improvement. Other educational initiatives such as all-day kindergarten, Race to the Top, State Professional Development Grant for school improvement purposes, formation of the Academic Service Department, and family and civic engagement team, which is BACET, were instituted under his watch. As a member of the larger educational community, Dr. Jones freely donated his talents as president of the Greater Cleveland School Superintendent's Association, as a board member of the Greater Cleveland Educational Development Center, as a member of the First String Leadership Committee, a member of the Board for Smart Consortium, and countless other organizations. Throughout his tenure with the Euclid City Schools, Dr. Jones maintained his focus on educating children and preparing them for life in the 21st century. Dr. Jones served the citizens of Euclid and their children with pride, dignity, integrity, and honor. As Dr. Jones concludes his service to the Euclid City Schools, we commend him for his outstanding leadership and stewardship, thank him for making the Euclid schools a better place to learn, and wish him good luck on all his future endeavors.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Van Hoen.
And?
Can I open this?
Yes. This is from the board.
Very hip.
Yes, it is very hip.
Okay, open the card later. Open this. Now, how nice.
I figured in retirement, maybe it'd be another plaque on the wall, but this would be something.
Says, "Joffrey Jones, 10 years of dedicated service and leadership," excuse me, "to Euclid City Schools, July 23rd, 2012." So, thank you very much. It's very handsome. I like this. It's going to go on my desk in my new location.
Where that may be. No, I'm only kidding. We know that.
I know. Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Van Hoen.
Where am I going to see that?
Have you haven't seen this?
No. We didn't get a chance of taking it out. We're told about it, but I did. Very nice. I don't want to touch it. I don't think I break.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if I could just say a word then.
Yeah, I guess we'll let you say a word.
The commendation, I don't know, you know, to tell you the truth, this district is where we are because of the people who work here. I just happen to be lucky to be working side by side with a great board and also with a great staff. And the teaching staff and the classified staff have all worked tirelessly for the betterment of the students of Euclid, and I'm proud to have been at their, at the helm during these past 10 years. You know, I've been widely heralded by you and by the mayor and by others, and I, again, I don't know how deserving that is, but it certainly is well appreciated. And I'm going to miss this place. I'm not going to leave this place. Well, I'm leaving this place, but I'm not going to leave Euclid, and not, not for any stretch of imagination for some time to come. We love our home. We love living here, but my time here is done, and I wish the district and the board and the children of the district nothing but the best. I'm very excited to be included in the planning for the dedication of the new school buildings, and that's been, that's going to be a great joy for me as well. I just felt it was time. You know when it's time. In my, in my ranks of fellow superintendents, they say, "You've come to a time when you know it's time," and I came to that time. I was, was one of the hardest things I have done in my professional career to have explained this to the board. I've developed not just professional relationships but friendships here, and I really appreciate all of the support that you have given to me over the years, as well as all the fine things you've said about me. So, thank you very much, board. I appreciate it.
Welcome. Okay, moving on, number six, is that for you?
Yes.
Mr. Bassett?
Yes. This is a resolution determining to submit to the electors of the school district the question of levying an additional tax. This is the first of two required actions for putting a levy on the November ballot, and in particular, this is a 10-year emergency levy in the amount of $5.4 million. We will submit this resolution to the county, at which time they will certify an estimated millage rate, which we believe will be about nine mils, and then a resolution to proceed will be brought back to the board, and we'll need to bring it back prior to August 8th because that's the deadline for submission. So, I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. And are there any questions or comments?
I just want to say that it's always difficult to go to the public for additional funds, and this is not something that the board relishes, the community relishes, but this has been a challenge because we continue to cut and we continue to be cut by the state. And eventually, as Mr. Smith has been fond of saying, you know, you keep asking people to do more with less, you eventually are doing everything with nothing, and that is where it feels that it's heading. And we need to be able to be responsible to the children of Euclid, and we would not be taking this step were not for them. So, it's an important time.
Question, do you feel this is enough to last us three years unless we get some other terrific cut from the state?
Looking at this levy against our, our most recent forecast, it'll definitely get us through the fiscal 13-14 year, possibly with, if nothing else changes, a few more cuts, getting us through the 14-15 year.
Interesting, even though the millage amount, you know, we know will be higher, the $5.4 million is pretty much the same amount of money that we keep going out for. About every three years, we ask for the same, it just seems to be about the same amount of money, but the reason is because we've made a lot of cuts along the way. Some that the public can see and notice and others that they don't, but we do know that we have a program that does well for students, and we're hoping to keep that program intact with only the cuts that we've already made. Okay, at this point, we'll call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries by zero.
Okay, numbers seven through 10 would be Dr. Jones.
Yes, Mrs. Van Hoen, thank you very much. Item number seven is a resolution considering summer employment for this summer, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries by zero.
Okay, numbers seven through 10 would be Dr. Jones.
Yes, Mrs. Van Hoen, thank you very much. Item number seven is a resolution considering summer employment for this summer, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Motion carries by zero. Thank you. Item number eight is a resolution considering certified staff for 2011-2012, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis.
This should bring to a close all of our resignations for the current, for the past school year. July 10th has gone by. The potential, I don't know that there is anyone else who is out there, but the only other reason a superintendent would let the person go after July 10th would be for substantial promotion in another district generally, moving to administrative ranks, for example, out of the teacher ranks. And so, we have five people representing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Your staff, that's twofold. All the mechanical systems have a requirement and specifications for a training day for your technicians and that kind of like lends folks. And that actually gets videotaped so that you can refer to it as you need to. And then also separately at Glenbrook, because it's the first kitchen, excuse me, at Chardon Hills, because it's the first kitchen to come online, we will be conducting a kitchen training session on the eighth of August. So, the eighth of August would be the first day where the kitchen is a hundred percent complete and the food service director is bringing in his staff. I know that you haven't always had kitchen staff at the elementary school, so these are all... But the benefit is all four schools are exactly the same kitchen. So, we're just gonna conduct the training at Glenbrook because it's the earliest, but that will carry through to all four schools. So, just to take a look at the budget, and at this time, now the budget incorporates all the packages, including the furniture and the educational technology package. And it also includes the alternate that the district elected to take, which was for the smart boards in every room. So, those adds are... Essentially, what happened was the savings in the bid was used to buy the smart boards. So, we held serve on the budget, but got a lot more for it. So, where we are right now, we started with a contingency of seven hundred and eighty thousand. We have approved change orders of four hundred and forty-four thousand and another hundred and two thousand pending. So, we have two hundred and thirty-three, five hundred remaining at Chardon Hills. The community inclusion continues to be the same, that we've, you know, we've had some new trades onsite, including the demolition, particularly of the demolition of another, of the Upton School. They were able to secure some Euclid residents for that. But, again, as I've reported in the past, Euclid trades people that are in the appropriate union for the work we're doing now, are not unemployed and being, you know, passed over, we asked, and they're either employed somewhere else or unavailable. So, the June accomplishments at Glen, Chardon Hills is we've completed the elevator, all the MEP systems are started, as I said, we're beginning commissioning. The painting is substantially complete, including some of the feature wall colors. The gym has been painted for a while. Ceiling pads are starting to go in, closing off the ceilings and really starting to give, unfortunately, we don't have any photos tonight, but starting to give rooms that real finished look, you know? Tarazo's complete and off the site. Electricians are substantially complete and off-site. The sprinkler system is done. The cabinetry is almost, is almost complete. And as you can see if you've driven by, both the site work and the landscaping are all substantially complete. We have a couple of days left of doing a few odds and ends, but... So, Chardon Hills is in very good shape.
Is the baseball field about ready? Not ready, but I mean, is it graded and all that?
It is graded, yes, and the sub-bases in. And I don't think they've put the actual surface down yet.
I was there Wednesday and I didn't see any surface down, so...
It's all laid out. We're reusing the dirt, the good dirt that we took from the varsity field and we're gonna place it at the Chardon Hills.
Okay, thank you.
Again, the site work at Chardon Hills has had the advantage of having the old Glenbrook out of the way for some time. So, moving on to Arbor. Arbor, as of last, at the end of the month last June, was ninety point two percent complete. Again, the same items were complete bidding to that site-specific items. The current issues are commissioning and the turnover of areas to the district, punch list and closeout. So, there is, in the kindergarten wing, and then in the other half of the first floor classroom wing, the waxing has started there as well. The VCT floor is complete, for the most part, on the first floor. Again, that's Tarazo hallways, so it's, you know, getting the hallways done is always a little cumbersome because everyone else is trying to get into the rooms. But upstairs is almost complete in the hallway and almost complete with the, in the classrooms vinyl-wise. So, again, that's another school that's been... Areas have been turned over to the district to start loading books and other fixtures. So, it doesn't have a C of O yet, but we're able to move in that kind of equipment.
Okay, what about on the current issues with the demolition, demolition of Roosevelt? Is being one of those items?
Well, it's definitely, it's obviously something that's, that's ongoing, yes. It's been going well, so I wouldn't characterize it as an area of concern in any way. We've, the way, the way in which we took the building down was to take both of those wings off because there is, we'll be moving the fence to get outside the last section that we need on the new school side to tie in all the storm sewers and all that kind of stuff. And then, you know, we, we obviously want to get that done and get the athletic field, you know, in the pipeline, but we'd be able to not need any temporary means, parking or temporary roads of any kind, provided we can get out of there. And that, that looks to be in good shape. On not just Arbor, but the other two schools that have been sort of held back waiting for the demolition in terms of site work completion. We are working on Saturdays to expedite the demolition. And we may continue, we may, we are prepared to recommend that we possibly do that with the site work as well. You're not talking about many days, but for a long time, we haven't had to worry about weather because we've been inside the building. But as we move back out to site work, these are things that are weather dependent. So, we've gotten away unbelievably. Yeah, right, it's like a perfect game, I won't...
Don't have it.
Yes.
And this question might have been asked before, and I'm sorry to keep asking. The playground that was at Roosevelt?
Yes.
That the PTA and everybody had helped form to get that ten years, twelve years ago, where did that end up at? Does this totally go wayside to the garbage, or was it, is it being repositioned someplace?
Well, there's a number of things from the Roosevelt playground that's being reincorporated into the new playground.
Okay, so it, so it didn't get totally thrown away?
No.
Okay, that's why we're just making sure, because I gotta ask that question over the weekend.
No, there is, there is a, there's a lot of equipment that's scheduled to be reused. Now, there is some, there's, there's an issue that just needs to be resolved in that, and I don't know if it's specifically the pieces that you're talking about, but there are some that have seen better days and may not be worth reinstalling, stuff that's at the end of its use of life, so...
Right, it's nice to see some of it being, being reused.
Yes, the intention is to, was to reuse a lot of it.
To maximize the reuse.
Right.
Which is nice.
Right. So, there's, there've been some discussions and there's gonna be one more round of evaluations with, along with the architect that would, you know, determine if it was being smart.
Because I walked behind the school on Thursday night there, and I could see the, where the swings were at and some of the, some of the equipment, and you could see stuff was laying around, but I wasn't sure if it was new or old.
Right.
And it looked like lots of nice areas for the kids to be playing.
Yes. Yeah, they're, they're just, they're actually waiting for us to make a decision on, you know, do we want to spend more money to buy new stuff, so...
But I was also wondering about those neighbors along that back fence. Are there gonna be another privacy fence put up to them, or how's that being situated? Right by the playground? I mean, it's like almost like twenty, fifteen, twenty feet, and there's the property line. And I didn't realize how, I mean, I didn't notice how close it was until I was there and I saw Thursday night.
I would have to double check that for you, I'm not...
I'm just out of curiosity.
You know, we talked about that, and I don't remember what we concluded.
I never noticed it...
Months ago, months and months.
I never noticed it in the drawings and the pictures.
Right.
But when I was out Thursday night and I walked around Roosevelt...
It's right at your face, then, you can see it there.
And then you saw how close it was. I mean, the children are there, there's such a limited time during the day, but I mean, you could have somebody, it could be upsetting by the noise level, too.
It'll be quieter than the construction.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll be happy not to hear that banging next year.
Question, when do you anticipate the Roosevelt School to be completely done and cleared away?
About August tenth.
Okay, and then is that about the time that those, the hills in the front will come down to be more normal size?
Yes, that, that is...
We've, we've gotten a lot of questions on that.
I've seen some of them.
Yeah, at least someone didn't know if roguine was applied to those hills.
I can't get my grass to grow, but that grass was...
Amazing, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, you know, along with working Saturdays and all that kind of stuff to get the, because all that dirt goes in the hole of the old school, so it's just a function of getting the old school carted away. So, we were able to do a real nice job on Saturday because we have the dump facility essentially to ourselves, so, because no one, no one else in the city's bringing a lot of stuff, so they're able to really move through, move through it. And so, we got a lot of haul-out done, both here and at Upton.
I noticed Upton.
Yeah.
It a lot was, I was like, ooh.
So, as far as the budget at Arbor, started with a contingency of just over one point three million. We have seven hundred and ten thousand in approved changes and just shy of two hundred thousand in pending for a contingency remaining of four hundred thousand. This contingency remaining, I have entered the East Two Hundred Street streetscape, so that is already reflected, in this case, it would be under the pending or estimated change orders.
Okay, so it's not coming out of the contingency?
No, it would not further reduce the contingency. It's already in the anticipated expenditures. Community inclusion is the same. The June accomplishments are virtually identical to Glenbrook, Chardon Hills. In fact, they are identical. The next school is Bluestone. Bluestone, according to last, end of last month's billings, was eighty-five point seven percent complete. Again, all the items are to be bid specific to that site, have been bid. And our current issues are humidity as it relates to the floor slab. We have had some humidity things, we're proceeding anyway, where this is why we've brought in some dehumidifiers and trying to minimize the exposure. The flooring installation was related to curing the humidity issues, but at this point, we've been going very well and beating projections in terms of yield. So, our schedule is based on certain number of men, certain yield every day, and therefore a certain duration, and we've been crushing it, so at this point...
Are they getting more people, or is it just...
They've been, they've been working faster, so...
They wanna get done with this job, too?
I think they do. So, at this point, Sequence Six, which is the kindergarten wing, the one-story kindergarten wing is complete. Sequence Seven, which is the first floor of the two-story classroom wing, complete. And then halfway through Sequence Eight, which is the second floor, two-story classroom is all complete with vinyl floor in the classrooms. Another issue for us, and it's been unfortunate, but the cabinetry delivery, as I reported last month, got to, took too much work and we've been paying the price for it. Some of it is here. Since the installer is the same throughout the district, the beneficiary has been the other schools because we haven't, we've absorbed that labor force at other schools. So, other for, everybody's been getting, for example, Upton, Shoreview done earlier so that when we do get everything straight, we'll, we'll all be focused on Bluestone. And Infinity has been providing their own manpower to supplement the installer. They worked last Saturday on, at their own cost because the responsibility is clearly on them or their subcontractors, so they're trying to minimize that impact. So, we don't have all of the pieces yet, we're still missing the cubbies, we're missing some countertops, but we at least have enough that we can begin installation. There isn't a whole lot of follow-on trades. What we did was we re-sequence things. We were gonna put the cabinets in first and then come behind with the flooring. We flip-flopped those to sort of minimize the damage to the schedule. You know, the layperson wouldn't know the difference, so... The only person, the only folks that need to come in behind that, there's an electrician throws in an under-cabinet light, and the plumbers have to connect the sinks in the classrooms, so... But that's something where we can put manpower at it, and you get a lot of yield, you can get four to six classrooms a day with a, with one person, so...
With one person?
Yeah.
Okay.
The last current issue is right now, we're still trying to pick up four days. Again, we've, every month, we've cut the number that we're trying to recover, so it's trending the right way. That this, this four days does not include any overtime at all, which we are putting the cabinetry in on overtime at Infinity's cost. We've directed everyone to put the flooring in on overtime on Saturdays. And that combined with beating our projections, we're projecting that school would open on time, so...
That's quite an accomplishment considering where we were.
Right.
Just six months ago, or even less than that.
So, what day do we get the keys?
What time does school start? Eight o'clock?
And that bus pulls in, that's when we give them?
Yeah, the, the, the reality of Bluestone is that there will be some things left over that we have to come in, mostly punch list type of stuff, you know, touch-up paint, nicks on door frames.
You'll be going in at night after the kids leave?
Yes, that's what we'll end up having to do. But, you know, you'll have a certificate of occupancy, it'll be safe, all the amenities will be there, you know, just things like damaged ceiling tile or a nick on a door frame or an outlet that's not perfectly straight, that kind of stuff, will be coming in after the school date to do those. And it's not, the contractors want to knock that stuff out as quickly as possible as well, so...
Well, I noticed when I went by Roosevelt one evening coming home from something, and Shoreview, there's, appears to be crews in there at nine o'clock, ten o'clock at night, looked like they were doing something, looked like some...
Tarazo.
Maybe flooring. Yeah, I've seen...
Yeah, the Tarazo, the one of the crews, Tarazo, from, the Tarazo crew is from Michigan, so they stayed at hotels, so they just, they work.
Because when I saw the lights on at Arbor, then I drove over to Upton, I saw the lights on there, and I was like, okay, there must be two crews going business.
Yeah, yeah, and sometimes, like I was getting in, like I said earlier, the, when you're trying to work in the hall and everyone else is trying to travel down the hall...
It doesn't work.
An off-shift is, is, is better use of your both people's time, so...
Pam, let me just, in order to confirm, I want to make sure that the board understands, and we've reflected this on the schedule in the past, but Pam's talking about occupancy dates and getting ready for the start of school, and that is absolutely correct in terms of the actual school facilities. But I just wanted to remind the board that the site work at each of the schools, except for maybe the exception of Chardon Hills, will extend for a number of weeks past the start of school. So, when we talk about schools being ready and, you know, ready for occupancy, that's reflecting the condition of the inside primarily, that's why Pam's clarifying that we think it's prudent to recommend some continued overtime on the site work activities because it's so weather dependent to make sure that we are successfully completing all that work this fall and minimizing disruption throughout the school year between the continued construction activities and the educational process.
Once the children are in the schools and the site work has yet to be completed, you know, it's in its final stages, or it's in its second or next to final stage, how, is that a distraction to the children as they're in school?
It's no more so than they've lived through, you know, for the past year and a half. Well, certainly work, as we have to this point, to be diligent in segregating the construction activities from the ongoing mission of the district to educate the kids. And, you know, we've worked site work and, you know, numerous construction activities that cause proximity between the existing schools and our construction activities for a year and a half, so, yeah, we'll be continuing to be diligent.
Yeah, I just think, I think about looking at what has been done at Chardon Hills so far, with the ornamental grasses real up, up close to the buildings and, you know, that type of thing, it just is...
The, those activities close in to the building will be completed.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll concentrate our efforts to complete those activities close in to the building.
Right, okay.
But completing the parking lots and curving and playfields away from the building.
Will playgrounds be in? Of course, they...
Well, it will be, it will be at Arbor, but, and it will be at, obviously, Chardon Hills. It will be at Upton. At, yes, Shoreview. At Bluestone, the problem is where it goes, that's where we've been storing topsoil so that to avoid the haul-away, pay to bring some more back. So, it's, it's can we clear that dirt and put it into the hole of the demo, of the demolished school and then turn it over and still have time to, you know, to install the equipment? So, I'm just not ready to make a call on that yet, so...
Will the courtyards be completed then in terms of what they have before school starts?
Yeah.
And that way, because that, that to me would be one of the more...
Absolutely, and, and I think you can see, all, all the schools have a, a large percentage of its, you know, secondary walkways and driveways and stuff. Even at, even at Bluestone, you know, the, on the northeast quadrant of the site where the, the trash enclosure is and all that, all that's been cut down, and now they're gonna be bringing in, you know, the road base and all that kind of stuff, so that, that area won't be a problem either, so... The budget for Bluestone started with a contingency just, just over seven hundred and fifteen thousand. We have five hundred and sixty-five thousand of approved changes and a hundred and ninety thousand of pending, which exceeds this building's planned contingency by forty thousand dollars, but as you know, the, it all flows to the bottom.
When will the mini-station start coming down?
The mini-station is gonna come down as early as Thursday, but probably next week. Yeah, we've all moved out. Infinity was in the basement, they've moved out, and so it's, it's essentially ready to come down, it's just we want them focused on the building.
Right.
So, the accomplishments at Bluestone, you know, the building systems are up and running, the painting is, is nearly complete. The site work, not including the demo area, I'm putting in about seventy-five percent. Window installation is complete, including the courtyard, which had been something that had been lagging due to hardware changes and that kind of thing. Tarazo, we're just in the grind and polish and seal. I wish we had some photos of it, but, tonight, but give me a call, I'll give you a tour myself. The ceiling grid and lights are all completed throughout the classroom wing, and the pads have begun. The flooring is underway, it's more than underway, in fact, I, I gave you the update by sequence, and obviously, the demolition is going well. Basically, it's just a chimney at this point, so...
That brings up a question, and I was gonna ask it under Shoreview, but since you mentioned chimney, we get strange question, unusual questions. We would anticipate, why is the chimney always the last thing to come down? I mean, at every, at, so far, we can see that Upton and at Shoreview, the chimneys are standing and the rest of the building's down.
It looks like everything around it came off, and then they left the chimney, like you want to leave one last monument, that's what it looks like.
I gotta ask if it was gonna stay up, so I just, you know...
I just don't think that they can, you know, they don't want it to hit the part of the building going over and then go careating off.
It's so much higher, it's much taller, and the height, you have to worry about adjusting things?
Well, it's, if, if it, if it does happen to go the wrong, though, not the way you intended, and then it kind of hits the building and then it starts, you know, tumbling it...
It's the most inefficient way to handle the debris as well, to get all of the other building debris out of the way and then just drop the chimney, and then it's more orderly in terms of organizing that debris.
Well, that gives us our answer to give to people, so...
I don't know if the district has gotten calls, but we've gotten calls from residents that want bricks and...
Yes.
Yes.
You can direct those calls to Pat Higley's office.
That's what I do.
As I have.
Who has upped the number of bricks he wants.
Yeah, yeah, who's upped the number of bricks that he wants, yeah. Including a number, we, we upped the number to salvage so that they could be incorporated in the monument signs, design, so...
And the other thing, the other question, since you bring it up, and now it's on my mind, is that a lot of folks have missed the auction that we had had earlier, but are still interested in maybe purchasing something just as a memento. Is there still the ability for some citizens to purchase something?
We will have another auction early September.
Great.
Those are a site that will probably...
And that's for things that we took out of the buildings but then decided we didn't need to use?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so that brings us to Shoreview, where as of the end of last month, eighty-three point two percent were complete. Our current issues are the sequencing of finishes and the humidity of the slab, getting areas cleaned and prepared for turnover. They're essentially in the same place with flooring installation. The pre-K, K wing, that little one-story is completes seven, the first floor classroom wing is complete. Two-thirds of the second floor classroom wing is complete, and then also Sequence Five, which is sort of that middle section of the building and goes down towards the art room and the...
Music room.
Music room, thank you, they get, are, is, is also done. So, Shoreview has its basketball hoops up, its scoreboards up, it's painted with the highlight accent colors, and it's really starting to look sharp. Right now, we're projecting a C of O at Shoreview August twentieth, which is a little bit earlier than Bluestone, which essentially means that it will be able to get more of that punchless commissioning type of stuff done and out of the way and not have to worry about coming in three o'clock or three-thirty, so...
When will they begin the sewer tie-in over at Shoreview?
As soon as the pile gets out of the way, yeah.
And a good chunk of that pile was gone today. I was amazed at how much it was gone from Friday.
Well, that was from Saturday.
Yeah.
Now, how long does this, will the tie-in take?
It'll take about a week.
You have to dig the drain, the...
Yes, he starts next Monday.
Okay.
So, that's when we're projecting the, although all the debris will be out of his way clear enough that he can slip in there and, and, and get that line in and put that curb in and all that kind of stuff.
And then will it take about a week?
Well, a week, yes.
Okay.
Well, to get that sewer line in, yeah.
Right, okay, is that, all the rest of the utilities are hooked up except for the...
Yeah, there's really only, I think, two catch basins in that whole run there. It's just, that's where it goes to tie in, so that was the problem, but... And then also, well, we're just getting to the budget, but also that alternate for the Plaza stamped concrete has been incorporated into the numbers. So, right now, it's under the pending column, so...
We saw them taking down the arch. How did that, how did it weather at Upton development?
Over the front door?
Right, yeah.
Stayed intact?
Yeah.
Did it?
Yeah.
They weren't sure whether, you know, you guys, when you talked about it, you were gonna try to do it and you weren't sure that...
Yeah, it's, so far, it's, it's holding up, so we're planning on reincorporating it. So, just to talk about the budget for a second, at Shoreview, we started with one point one, two, five, essentially, in conti- in contingency, 529,000 approved changes, 151 impending, including the, the recent request for the stamped concrete Plaza contingency remaining of $444,000.
So if I add it correctly, we have over a million dollars in contingency left?
Uh, yes, and one, one way that you could do that is, um, the next section in your package is the multi-project cost report, and this incorporates all projects, including the off-site demolition packages. And if you go to the last page, nine of nine, and go to the bottom of the page, far right column, that is your contingency, 1,523,523.
That's about 500,000 more than what I added.
District-wide.
You also have contingency in the.
Are there outside package?
In the, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you actually have 411,000 in contingency for the district-wide.
That's 483, with maybe a soft cost.
Yes, yes, 483, including soft cost contingency. Soft cost contingency is for things like additional architecture services, additional testing services, that kind of thing.
Okay, now, if we take out the 700,000.
The 700,000, yes.
Then we still have some money left, but.
Yes, you have about 850,000.
Then we use that for more landscaping or for something else, or?
Well, you could, although I would caution you.
Or is there something else to do with it?
Well, there's still are things that happen out in the field, including, you know, when we go out to put these athletic fields in, we're dealing with, you know, unforeseen soils again.
Okay.
Obviously, you all know that these sites weren't on the greatest soil conditions. So there are still things happening, things come up as we finish the, finish the buildings out. We do need to also close the books on all these contractors. I can report to you that, because it's, even though we haven't received formally, um, this Infinity claim, you all know that it's been whispered about a million dollars for TJ and 700,000 of which was attributable to one of their subcontractors. That number of 700 has been reduced to 290,000, so that, you know, reduces their overall claim in kind, so.
So I guess, okay, let me ask the question in a different way. When do you get done with all, settling out all the claims and everything?
Yes.
There's going to be, hopefully, there's going to be little money left.
Okay.
Okay. Can we use any of that money or does the state get their money back and all that? I can say that since Mr. Kaplan's not here.
Yeah, they would get their share.
They get their 21%.
They get their share back.
And you get to use your share.
Okay, so we can't add anything at the last minute type of thing?
So it's best for us to use everything we have right now.
Dennis would have to agree to co-fund any additional work that the district may consider.
Okay.
Which he does, I mean, he does.
Yeah, he has.
I mean, he weighed in on your decision to, you know, upgrade the East 200th Street. He had to agree to that, he agreed to it. Uh, he had to agree to the stamped concrete Plaza, he did agree to it, so.
The smart boards as well.
Uh, yeah, the smart boards as well, yeah.
But also, what about the signs we're putting in front of the schools? We haven't, is there any money for that in this money?
Well, that, that money is, that money is not in, in here.
Oh, it's not?
It is not in here, and that is because we do not have a design, so it's being designed right now.
And are those going to Architecture Review Board in August or are they going in September?
Uh, I don't know, that's, I don't know when.
Pressure you guys.
I haven't seen them yet, so.
Does ARB meet in August?
Yes.
They do. But we have to get the, they may pledge the deadline for their request a little bit, but have you contacted them? Because I think it's.
It's coming up.
It's coming up, it's the end of the week, I believe.
I think it's into this week.
To get on the agenda.
For their August meeting.
Like you need to make the submittal, the copies or whatever?
I don't know, I, I just know what the scheduled date is, I have it in an email.
Normally, you have to submit your, your things in advance.
And then also, we, didn't we say, we put a whole temporarily at the security TV cam, not cameras, but the screens, you know?
Right, not security screens.
No, right, the TV, the flat screens, that's right.
Flat screens, that's it.
I couldn't come up with what the word was, sorry.
Right.
Um, but if that's something, it's something we had talked about doing, we said that would be our last thing we picked from, but that's still out there to be done and we have this money, I think we should do it.
Is that co, is that co-funded money?
It's co-fundable if Mr. Kaplan were to agree, yes.
Okay, okay. We'll just kind of keep that in our thought pattern?
Yeah, I, I.
Recommend to the board that, that we really keep the remaining contingency available to settle construction-related issues.
Right.
We'll, we'll tell you what we recommend, that we feel safe, that it's an appropriate time to allocate those sponsor uses.
We just want to try and get as much as we can from the state.
Sure, and.
Because once it's gone.
Right, once it's gone, it's hard.
Once it's gone, it's gone, yeah, that's right.
And I, I, I think that that's what Dennis would say is, you know, if we can make him feel more comfortable about the, the potential claims and closing out of contractors, then he'd be more open to, of course, I'm predicting what Dennis would say.
But, I mean, since they were things that we had talked about and we did put the facility, like the flat-screen TVs, we did put the, the equipment there for it.
I think the key would be demonstrating ability to close out the existing contracts and then he'd be more amenable to discussing that.
Right. I know we sound like we're getting ahead of this thing, but we get excited about it.
It's nice to see you have money, but we don't have it, you know.
Right. So we kind of led into the multi-project cost report, you know, you just refer to it as you want to. The next section in the package is the cost curves, which shows you our monthly billings and, you know, but I've moved most of those numbers up into the summaries. So, um, that is all I have, unless you have specific questions, I can help you.
Source and chimneys for my questions.
Chimneys, missing bricks, where can I get bricks? Where's the playground equipment?
Well, no, I was a good girl, I didn't steal a brick when I walked by Shoreview.
I had somebody call me and say, listen, I just want you to know, I'm doing this the right way, so I really want this. You know, I was like, are you threatening me?
No, I was impressed with seeing the screen around, like where the dumpsters go at Shoreview. I walk by that almost every night, so I can see that finished and seeing in there the flooring and, and I saw the security guy from the security company.
I did too.
He wanted to know what, what I had business doing over there.
Yeah, well.
And I really wasn't on, I was on the sidewalk, I really wasn't behaving.
He's accosted Mr. Hummel on numerous occasions.
He goes, you don't have any business being here, it was like nine o'clock at night.
And you say, excuse me.
I had business being anywhere I want, that's what he told me.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
So will we have a, another facilities update on August 27th or will we move that up? That's the second, at least on my calendar, that's the second school board meeting that is scheduled for August, that's our last Monday.
Hopefully, we just have all the keys turned over.
I would recommend it actually, and I know I will not be the superintendent, but I would recommend it being the 20th.
Moving it up a week.
Moving it up a week.
Speaking of meetings, we're going to have to schedule a very short special meeting for a levy.
For either the 30th or the 6th?
Or some other day.
I'm out of town.
No, it's got to be.
On the 30th through the 3rd.
It could be anytime after Wednesday of this week. I mean, we just need to notice that I can get the, the, the county to do their thing and, and the next resolution in a day or two.
Is their thing quickly? I mean, they can do theirs pretty quick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, when, when are you out of town?
I'm leaving, uh, Monday afternoon and I won't be back until Saturday, the 4th. I'll be gone for a week.
So do we need to do it Thursday, the 26th then?
That would be fine with me if.
You want to do a daytime one, is that easier?
I was going to say we could do a six o'clock or something.
Oh, that's right.
I mean, people work, so.
No, I, so do I.
Mr. Bell and I will both be at a meeting on Thursday night.
Oh, okay.
What time?
This week, Thursday.
Well, but if your meeting starts at seven and maybe.
No, it actually, it, we, we start at noon and we go through until about 9:30, 10 o'clock.
Wow.
Yikes.
Wow.
All right, the 27th.
It could be Wednesday night?
No.
Okay, how about the 27th, if we know we're going to make it just?
Steve, Steve, when's the earliest we can do this?
Oh, no, that's my rehearsal.
Well, I know the board wants, doesn't may not want to do this, but how about early in the morning or on the, on the way to work?
I can do that.
At 20, on the 26th?
Mm-hmm. That's Thursday?
Because it's going to take five minutes.
You want to do the 26th, that what is, what is on the way to work? I mean, 7:30, 8 o'clock, 8 o'clock sounds much better.
Ken, what time, Ken, what time do you need to be here?
I have fewer minutes of sleep now.
Long as I'm at work at 8:30, doesn't matter.
Come on, I'm the one that has to wake up early for this.
You, we're all shouting various things at me and I'm.
No.
Steve, do we, is, we have to do it on, not that we have to do it, but we can't do it before the 26th, is that correct?
We, um, my board policy, we need 48 hours for a meeting notice. And then I, I basically just need a day turnaround with the county auditor and the lawyer to provide for a resolution.
I can meet the month, Monday morning, the 30th, I'm not leaving until the afternoon on Monday.
Well, I mean, we can do the.
The 30th. Or we could do the 27th at the, oh, no, because you can't do the 27th.
And we don't necessarily need to have the full board.
We can do it in the morning.
Do we need, yeah, what's, what's our conflict with the 27th?
It's, in the evening is not, I won't be here, but that doesn't mean other people can't do this.
Even if we move the time up a little?
What time, okay.
I'm booked for a four on, I would say, Friday.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Again, I can do the morning or the 26th.
Or can you do it, or can lunchtime, whichever?
I cannot do lunch.
Okay, get out here and back. Okay, so what time in the morning do you need a meeting?
Eight.
Eight o'clock, does that work for you?
Eight o'clock's fine, yeah.
Okay, we'll do eight o'clock on the 26th then?
I might need a reminder drop phone call. If you see my car parked in the wrong parking lot, call me.
Well, you'll send, um, they'll send an email out with the board meeting notice. Mr. Desick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything more, Pat?
Well, ju, just one thing that isn't necessarily tied to one specific school, but I wondered if there were any questions, because I know that the board was contacted directly as it relates to the technology contractor that's onsite.
Can you speak to that for briefly?
Uh, sure. The technology contractor, just like any other contractor, was, had not had a chance to have his work inspected by the design team yet, audited to make sure that it complies with all specifications and, and codes and everything. And in fact, the project manager for that company visited the site, saw the same thing that isn't proper and was already working on the fix when all this emails and letters and, and things started. So nothing new was pointed out to us. I think it's mostly a case of sour grapes, unfortunately. And, and that, and that was on one issue. The other issue, as it relates to the cable rating for plenums, um, the contractor was following the specifications and the specifications were wrong. So he was doing as he was told per his contract documents. Problem is, his contract documents didn't comply with the code, so.
Is that getting changed then?
Yeah. It is getting changed.
Okay.
It does cost some money.
And who provides the documents?
Your architect and engineer.
Well, we do appreciate, um, those Euclid residents that contacted the board about these issues, because it seems like they were correct.
In this case, they were, yeah.
So I wouldn't necessarily call, I wouldn't characterize that as sour grapes, I would characterize that as Euclid residents protecting the investment of this community. That being said, seems like there are some, you know, your team was stepping in to make some adjustments and, and we had bad documentation.
Yes, I, I think it's, you know, all contractors, no matter if they're electricians or plumbers or concrete contractors, union or non-union, often do non-conforming work. That's why we have a system for inspecting it, telling them it's not right and that it needs to be corrected. This would have gone through the normal process and been handled. You know, they weren't given the same opportunities to have their work evaluated and, you know, but at the, at the end of the day, yes, the comments, some comments were correct, others were a little bit exaggerated.
Okay, but, so the wiring is being corrected now, is that like, has that already been through the building and has to be taken back out?
It was on one school.
One school, first of all, the wiring in question was basically the wiring from a box like that up to a projector like that. So it was the area, the, the, the space that had traveled in the ceiling from the wall over to the projector. That was 100% in at Glenbrook and it was 25% in at Arbor. So that had to be pulled out, the cable was able to be returned for a restocking fee only, and then the proper cabling reordered and then reinstalled, so.
So that goes under the category of specs being incorrect that we will look at in the total at the end?
Yes, there is a change order to do this, because the contractor was doing what the document said.
The architect must have a different interpretation.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
Anyway, because you were contacted directly, I wanted to give you the opportunity to ask me any questions, so, of course, you don't have to wait for a meeting like this, you can always call me when something like that happens.
We call, usually call Mr. Higley, he calls you then.
That's why I get so many calls from him. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Has the board settled on the date for the next meeting or not?
Um, it would be August 20th is what is being recommended.
That's what I would recommend. Um, we came off cycle a little bit because of the special meetings and the timings of the special, of, of an additional meeting, and we don't normally have a special meeting in July.
Right.
So we use this already for that particular purpose. So I think the 20th would also put us in good stead to have a very good indication about where we are as well.
Are we going to also have a meeting then on the 27th?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not moving anything up or adding?
We're just adding a meeting. All right. Okay, are there, if there's no other questions, I believe the last thing I did have them put on was board members informals, since it was Dr. Jones' last meeting. If any board members had anything they wanted to say?
Uh, yes, Madam President, um, it's certainly difficult to encapsulate 10 years of excellent leadership to this district in, you know, mere moments and minutes. But Dr. Jones, it was an absolute pleasure to work alongside you as you led this district through challenging times, um, just because it seems like there's, you know, it seems like there's never not a challenging time for public education. That being said, there were, it was exciting when we were making decisions that were trying to decide between what was good and what was best. And, and that was because I believe, you know, the, the community supported levies, um, and, and this community really did have an excellent school system, you know, four years ago or so, when we were building new buildings and achieving academic progress and being supported by the community. And, you know, then as the economy turns, it gets harder on us as it got harder on all of our residents in the city of Euclid. And then we were making tougher decisions where we were choosing between not the most desirable outcomes, but you demonstrated excellent leadership in both of those scenarios. And we were just lucky to have that, you know, that, those, those fortunate times, and I think we had those fortunate times in large part because of your leadership, because the community gravitated around you. You are, your academic, your foresight as to public education, um, served this community very well. The fact that that came wrapped up in a extraordinarily personable individual, you were friendly, you were funny, you care about people, and that genuine compassion. you care about people, and that genuine compassion for the residents of this town and the children of this town was very evident, and I think the community embraced it. And I think, in that respect, you really did cause those good times to occur. Um, and I think the tougher times emerged, be, you know, out of certainly no fault of your own, but the larger economic picture that was troubling for, you know, the entire nation. Um, and obviously, we had some of that reflected here in Euclid, we experienced some of that as communities all across Ohio did. Um, so, yes, you were a unique and, um, poised and intelligent and extraordinarily personable leader for this district, and the city was lucky to have you, and it was a pleasure to work alongside you. And we, I certainly, and I'm sure the board does as well, but I doubt that these are the only comments. Um, it was good to have you, um, engaged in the fight with us, and I enjoyed it for all 10 years, and personally wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I appreciate it. It's been an honor to work beside you as well.
Any other comments?
I have one. I can remember as a parent, 2003 graduation, and I still remember a piece of the speech that was said, "Dr. Jones was the only superintendent in the state of Ohio who had the field goal kicker be the homecoming queen."
That's true.
And I, I sit there and chuckle, because I knew who the home, homecoming queen was, it was a, and I thought, you know, that was kind of a neat way of spending on the whole school year to put down, come in with the humor to do it. But I also got to sit this year on the stage and hear the graduation speech, where Dr. Jones became an honorary member of the class of 2012.
That was sweet.
So, he went from saluting the, um, homecoming queen to being a member of the class that was graduating. I thank you for welcoming me, I mean, we worked together through other projects, this is my first six months on the school board. Um, sorry for all the emails you got, and all the questions.
I appreciated them.
Text messages, um, I tried to learn, I, wait till I get ahold of your new email address, because I'm sure you'll get, you'll see Kathy DeAngelis' emails, but I do wish you luck.
That's classified, by the way, my new email address.
Oh, no. I got access to that reader board on Lake Shore Boulevard.
Uh-oh.
But good luck.
Thank you, Kathy DeAngelis, thank you, and good luck to you as well.
I'd like to just, um, say it's been an honor and privilege to work beside you in the trenches, through all of our, our many levy campaigns. Um, but I just wanna say, the whole, the whole evolution of the facilities from the very beginning, when you think back where we started and how impossible it seemed, it just seemed like we, we had so many choices to make, um, you know, where do we begin? And it's amazing to me, and I, I, I just think this whole community needs to thank you for your insight and your dedication to this project, because, like I said, Kent and I were at those meetings, and, you know, just to, to think about how this evolved into these four, you know, magnificent buildings. But I also wish you the best, and I'm sure we'll keep in touch.
We will, thank you, Mrs. Sudar.
Yes, my honor.
Just want, I know that I've said a few words, but I'm gonna say a few more. Um, I do remember being part of the reorganization committee when you first came to our district, and feeling a sense of recharged renaissance, a renewal of faith in our community that we haven't felt in a long time. And I think that not only, uh, myself and my husband as parents, but I think a large number of community members felt that energy. That was something new, it was something that we needed, and I think your arrival in our community couldn't have been more perfect. And, uh, I thank you for that. And I know, over the last 10 years, and I will say 10 years is a long time for an urban district superintendent to serve, um, because you face a number of challenges, and it often burns other people out, but for you to be as steadfast as you were, to handle things with as much dignity and finesse the way you did, um, it just made us all very proud to be part of this community, and we thank you for that. And, uh, I've had an opportunity to meet your son, and I always think that a, a good judge of character is looking, is reflected in children, as, and parents, and now I know why you are such an advocate for children, because I see what an advocate you were for your son. And, um, it's heartwarming, it's, it's been good, it's been very good for us. And it was time, you've given us 10 really wonderful years, and you need to go and take care of yourself, and do, share your knowledge with others, and we appreciate everything you shared with us. And we, as a board, can continue to grow, because we have a certain bit of knowledge that I hadn't had if I had not met you, so, best of luck, Dr. Jones.
My, thank you, Mrs. Lysy, I appreciate it.
We really, I, we all did, we really enjoyed the last 10 years we spent with you.
As have I, so thank you.
Well, it's hard to wrap it up, and, you know, I've been on the board for a while, longer than you've been here. Um, but, you know, people sometimes ask me, "Why do you keep doing it?" And I keep telling them, "It's the kids, but it's also the people you work with." If you weren't who you are, I don't know that I would keep running and running and running and stay, still be here. Um, but you certainly have made our, our job, especially when we serve as president, a lot easier. You know, you're organized and, um, conduct meetings well. I went, we went through the beginning of the, um, I just lost, went out of my head, the district leadership team. Um, and so, we had time down in Columbus, where we talked just about kids and what's best for kids. And I really, um, treasure those times and treasure the long talks we would have going down and coming back. We certainly know a lot about each other that we won't share. But no. Uh, I just can't thank you enough for who you are as a person, um, who you are as the leader of the district, and all that you've done for me personally, and for the members of the board, and, most importantly, for the students of this district. Your heart's in the right place, it always has been, it always will be. And I think that, um, there's, you know, this is a token of what we feel for you. I don't think that we could ever put it all in words, and I, and I don't think that we would have enough money to give you, to, to say thank you to you for anything, because it is just, uh, you are every bit the superintendent that I thought you were when we hired you.
My, thank you, Mrs. Van Hooch. And thank you for the opportunity to serve outside, I will say this one last time, it has been an honor for me, um, to be superintendent in this school district, and to serve the community and the children of Euclid. Um, working with the city, the city officials and other members of the community has been a joy. Um, more, a bigger joy than I thought I was even in for when I accepted the position, was so happy to have been chosen, so, thank you again, um, you have made me, you don't grow in a vacuum, and, um, all of us have grown together. And I appreciate that opportunity for my growth that you have given. And I wanna thank Mr. Basseck, too, for 10 years of a partnership, which is, I think, been very strong. We share the same birth date, um, and we share the same sense of humor, which is very frightening.
Just, just, just to be clear, it's not the same year. For, for the record.
I said birth date.
He is the numbers guy.
Yeah.
It's eight or 10 years.
It's 10 years, it is. Remember the signs out on front of the board I was building?
Yes, I remember them, and you finally confessed, so. So, I want, I do wanna thank, thank the board for giving me the opportunity to work with Steve as well.
I never knew that.
Yes, it was me.
And I guess we should point out that this is your last televised meeting, but you've actually got a meeting at 8:00 AM.
That's right, right? So, bring your little, I'll just set it out here and, and on a twixt podium.
Hey, we could get the seal on the commendation, but-
Bye, Ben.
Really official, sorry. But, uh, Dr. Jones' secretary is the one that does the seals, and she wasn't in today, so we couldn't get her to put it on at the last minute.
Well, thank you again.
All right, thank you. Um, at this point, we're ready for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we'll move, we'll give it to Mrs. Lysy this time, and Sudar is the second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hooch?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis?
Yes.
Mr. Carrius 5-0.
Thank you, we are.